Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
October 11th, South West Vermont Union Elementary District meeting as a temporary chair. The agenda goes as follows: Fledge of Allegiance, Public Comment, Consent Agenda, and Forest Finance, and we have a Williams College donation, Bennington Elevator Design Change Order, along with the Treasurers Report. Superintendent's Report for Policies, the Chair's Report, supervisor's report, and for your information, Budget Status Report, and our student enrollment numbers for October. If the attendance is okay, would everybody present?
Yeah, sounds good.
The Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, liberty, and justice. Thank you. Are there members of the public who wish to comment?
Were there any members of the public?
I do not see, seeing none. With Consent Agenda includes minutes, warrants, there are no leave of absences, retirements, or resignations, and no nominations. Is there a motion to?
Motion.
Motion by Sandy. Discussion.
In the minutes, could we change it from June 14th to September 13th? On the agenda?
Well, why didn't we do that?
We're changing the agenda, not necessarily the minutes.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Yes. And number one, being closed minutes from June 14th to reflect that it's the minutes from September. Is all that, Richard? Okay. Well, actually, the minutes said the meeting was September 13th.
Yes, but the agenda is minutes enclosed, June 14th.
Right, so it's both wrong month and day.
I thought the date was okay on the minutes.
Was that, Richard?
I thought September 13th was the date. I might be wrong on that one.
No, your minutes are right. It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's just the agenda.
Yeah, right. We don't need a motion. I think it was reflected in this. We had no further discussion? So, then, those in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda for October, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or extensions? Next item, Businesses Finance, there's a Treasurers Report. Did I see that posted? I don't.
I didn't see it.
I don't have it. Well, maybe we'll leave that out. We have Bennington Elevator Design Change Order, number one.
That's in here.
Speaking of, Richard, I can, it's an additional cost. It's for the geotechnical engineering part of, the engineers made a determination because, you know, there's a sump to an elevator site, so they have to do excavations there. So it's been determined they're going to do some geothermal testing first, make sure that they're not going to be building on fill or any other previous site that might have been there. So, you can, it's a design change, so you're voting on the additional cost of $6,738. And then if you vote that, then I can sign it. Any discussion? This is for the elevator at Bennington Elementary School to design, to do the structural engineering. You need to, we need to do this geothermal engineering first, geotechnical, not geothermal, sorry, geotechnical engineering. That's a necessary part of the project.
Motion accepted.
We have a motion from Sue, second.
Second.
Sandy, further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of the Benell Elevator Design Change, total link $6,734, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries, amount approved. I am seeing Williams College donation to Powell School, the amount $5,000. I believe we need a motion to accept. There is a letter in your packet, and from his principal, on how they will use that $5,000 donation from Williams College. Do we have a motion to accept that? Motion by, second, second by Sandy. Any further discussion?
Just to tie down on that agenda.
Oh, collage.
Collage.
What? That's what Williams is.
That's what collage is.
Any more discussion?
No, just, just, you know.
Oh, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Okay, motion carries, the letter was included. Superintendent's Report. First, Director of Finance, Renee Gordon, sent you an email earlier. I don't know if you've seen it, there is an additional warrant that needs to be signed, so I can pass that around. It was late for the agenda, so she had that for you. Couple of housekeeping, and with three members absent, I don't know if you want to defer to another meeting, but we do need representatives from this school board for negotiations. Scott McInerney is listed as, I think I have Chris Murphy coming into the meeting.
Yeah, he says he didn't, he never got the agenda, so he didn't mail it like he did.
Scott McInerney is listed as the negotiating rep from this board with the teachers. We have no one listed to be the negotiating rep with the educational support personnel, and that is going to start this year, the teachers will start next year. And we also will need someone to be the representative from this board to negotiate with administrators, because that will begin this year too. So we're looking for two representatives from this board for negotiations, one for education support personnel, and now that we have Chris here, I don't know, that's something, I don't need it tonight, so if that's something that you want to survey your board to see who would like to be the representative from educational support personnel, and one for the administrators, which is principals and vice principals, not directors. So those two units are up this year, but sooner rather than later. He commuted, Chris.
So folks, my apologies about that. I've not yet turned over my email address, so I'd never received an agenda, and so it wasn't on my radar. It should have been on my radar, but it just wasn't, so my apologies to everyone there and for being late.
We had a quorum, Chris, so it was fine, we were able to start, and the board made Dick the acting chair, which our legal counsel advised us we could do, because we'd need the chair, vice chair, or clerk here, so, but now you're here.
Yeah, and so I'm pulling up the agenda now, so I can, so I can.
I know the administrative unit is pretty anxious to begin negotiating, so if you could appoint someone to be that representative soon, just email both me and Nick Golf, the Director of HR, who's going to be representing you on that, that'll be fine. And then who will be educational support personnel? I wanted to give you an update on intraschool choice. It's been a few years now that we've had, we call it school choice, but the name on the form is intraschool choice, and this is something that happened when we merged the district. So we do have an application process, and we have a procedure spelled out for, you know, how that is carried out. As, give you an idea of where we are number-wise, we have had 47 applications for intraschool choice, and there are 37 non-resident students in an intraschool choice school. So the non-resident is the term we use, I can give you an example, if you are from Powell, but you're attending school in Bennington, you're attending as a non-resident student, because you're not a resident of that town. And when we merged the districts, that allowed that to be possible. So there are 37 students currently in a school that they are not a resident of that attendance zone or that town. Met recently with principals to get feedback on how they feel that program is working, and, you know, should there be any adjustments to it, which then I will bring back to the board, because you, you know, this was your vote to develop intraschool choice. So I will be bringing back to you some possible changes as we do this. When we started, we used the Mount Anthony High School School Choice application as a model, so that parents would be familiar with, you know, kind of use the same documents as much as possible. The high school is, a high school school choice is a state, a state program that shares seats between other high schools, so that's always been there. But it had a March 1st deadline, so when I developed intraschool choice for us, I used that same deadline, so that parents would, at least might be on their radar. Principals are asking that we consider doing a further back deadline, more like June 1st, to give them a better idea of what class sizes might be in their schools. I still need to process that and see how I think that may play out, but I don't really think that that would be a problem, other than we'll have to get Katie West really involved in, you know, changing the website and publicizing that out to families, so that, I mean, you can apply anytime you want, but the deadline would be June 1st. So I think it gives us plenty of time for my office to then turn around, see where there are openings at different grade levels, and whether we can offer that intraschool choice seat to a family. For those who might not have been here, or need a refresher, this is, by May 1st of every, so you would apply by March 1st, but then by May 1st, I would make a determination of the number of spaces in each of the elementary schools available to choice students. Resident students would be given a priority placement in any classes of programs within their home school. With respect to non-residents, in some other words, if, you know, if you live in the Bennington attendance zone for Bennington Elementary, you are the priority to go there. Then we, so let's use an example, there's, we use the number 20 as the guideline for class size, because that's Vermont Quality Standards is 20, you know, it's not, some people think that that's a number that's negotiated in the teacher's contract, it's not, it's Vermont Quality Standard. So some classes sometimes will be more than 20, there might be less than 20, but we use 20. So if there was less than 20 students in that classroom, then I would declare by May 1st, that, like, say there was only 16 kids in there, I said that there's four seats available for intraschool choice. And then we'd go down the list and offer those to families. And we would send a letter to both principals, both the school choice principal and the resident school principal, they would each get a letter descending in the receiving school. Principals ask, can we also make sure that we send to student support services, because the services change with that, follow with that student? So that was a very good suggestion, that we would then put that, put them on the CC list for that. The selection of non-resident students for admission is in the form of a random drawing, when the number of requests exceed the number of available spaces, and that has happened. Let's say I would have two openings and four applications for kindergarten seat at Monument, we're doing a random drawing of who gets those two seats, and then the others can waitlist it.
If a student, if a family has two children, and the older child is attending their school of choice, what happens to the younger siblings?
I want to be clear on that before I answer you, I mean.
I thought we addressed that.
I did too, that's why.
So in the definitions, it doesn't list that there is a priority given to someone who already has a student in that school?
So, so say there's six kids that want to go to a specific school, there's four openings, you said it's a random drawing of those six kids?
Yes.
And if you change it to, so before it was March 1st deadline, you told them by May 1st the amount of kids available, amount of seats available.
Right.
But it's going to be June 1st, what is the new deadline of, what do families know?
So, what I'm leaning to, the principals are talking to you, what I'm thinking is keeping, doing a May 1st application deadline, and I'll come back to you with a final proposal, but I wanted to talk not so, with a June 15th, or last day of school, whichever is sooner, that we notify parents, so that they would know by, and that, you know, that gives my office over a month to process the applications, and then coincide with where the openings are in the different schools.
So I have a question, from the principal's perspective, why, I would think you would want to know earlier than later, so what is the benefit of knowing later for them?
I think they want more time to see who's coming into their district and taking those seats from when, in their resident district, and so that then they're not overpopulating those grade levels. So like, if they basically hold those seats open for as long as possible, see who's moving into the district, and if, and then, and then that the seats are available. Because the second part of this, what we've been doing is we do a second round, we haven't been doing a second round in August, and that's something that the principals are asking that we consider discontinuing. I'm not saying that that is what I will recommend, or whether that would be a good idea. What we would do, we would look, in first week of August, anybody who's on our waiting list, who didn't get in in the first round, are there still seats available, because from, from June until August, there's always some in and out, right? So maybe another seat opens up, and we can really give a family a choice that they want. Principals were pretty strongly against, against that, because they, you know, feel rosters are already set, but they're not always set, because as any principal can tell you, you're going to have people even show up, you know, two days before the status school, or the status school, or here I am. So if I, so the principals can sort of, if I fill up those open seats in August, what happens to the walk-in student at the end, and now you're over, you're 20? But remember, that 10, 20 is a guideline, it's not, it's not, and we are public schools, we can't say, you can't come.
So I have a follow-up on my other question, so if they want more time to see who their residents are, isn't it more of your deadline than, so, so what if you kept the March 1st deadline? That's requiring families, they need to let the school or central office know by March 1st that they need, they'd like a combination. But then extend the timeframe that you guys are going to say this is the amount of time open, you know what I mean? Because that seems to be more of their concerns, the principal's concern, than the time that they're being notified that there's people interested in intraschool choice, you know what I mean? I would think that earlier we would know that, the better.
But the one question I would have on that is, the last, the week after school ends, that's the time when teachers get together to start looking at the data for the following school year, so they may want to know who is in their class, teachers may need to know, so they can look at that information.
Right. No, no, I agree with the second deadline. So like, say we extended and said that May 1st, we did June 1st or June 15th, whatever your recommendation is, the last day of school, on announcing to those who have applied that these are the openings.
Right.
But why does it, why would it affect principals to know earlier students that want to come into their schools? I mean, that's what I'm missing.
Yeah, I mean, with those kind of numbers, I think school, intraschool choice has been a success. Has it been widely embraced by all of our schools? I, you know, I think people are comfortable with the families they know from their own school district and when, so, and I'm talking in general terms, and I really shouldn't do that, but I feel that it's not been as, particularly when we get to that August deadline, that's what, if I took one thing away from my meeting with principals, is eliminate the second round. You know, how many you put into our class? The other thing that they asked, and I don't, I don't think I can agree with this, is that I leave under the 20 gap, like, say, I'm only going to go to 18 when I do school, intraschool choice, and leave two seats open in case somebody moves in. But you could be at 20 with your own school district, and if somebody moves in, you still have to take that student. That's the nature of a public school. And some years you're going to be under that number, and some years you're going to be, you know, you're going to be over that number. But again, I'm bringing it to you for feedback, so that as I write, then as I rewrite this, these procedures, and then I'll present this to you at a future meeting, and then we'll have, once we, whatever changes we make, then we'll promote with Katie West to get that information out to parents, so.
So my other question, I guess, would be, if there is an exodus from age to age school, whichever one it is, wouldn't we want, wouldn't you want to know the why?
We don't ask that on the application, and honestly, like, when I look at the notes that are on here, a lot of it has to do, like, with where the parents work, you know, where their, where their daycare is. What they understand, too, is it's, it's a permanent thing, once you're a school choice student, like, you apply for, at the second grade level, you stay there until you reach the terminal grade for that school, which is fifth grade in Bennington, and sixth grade and other, so you are part of that community, it's not, you don't have to apply for intraschool choice every year, you're there. So it's not, you know, I don't, I don't see that it's, you know, I have, I have students from, you know, Monument that want to have school choice to Bennington Elementary School, I have students from Woodford that have school choice to Molly Stark, and, and someone the other way. So I don't, I really surprisedly do not see a pattern here, that, you know, you might jump to a conclusion that there's nexus from one school, and it's, so I don't see, you know, I would like to hear the, because there was two sides of this argument, and I think Sandy, you mentioned it. So, you go into, we'll go to a school, you go to Woodford as a kindergarten student, even though you live in Bennington, you're school choice. Now you're in the third grade, and your sibling comes along. Do they, do they get, you know, and this is a philosophical discussion, somebody's saying, no, everyone has a chance for that other kindergarten class, you give a preference to somebody who's already there than who you're excluding. And sure, you say, well, parent doesn't want their kid at two different schools, again, that's a parental choice. So I, I can see, you know, I've had both sides of the argument, but I would, I would welcome how the board feels about that, as we make, you know, do we give a preference to a sibling of someone who's already in that school?
Isn't that in a policy, because I kind of remember debating it at one of the meetings, and maybe it was prior to us as one big.
Yeah, it's not, it's not in here.
Yeah, because I can see both sides of the argument too, I can see the reason why you want, but then I can, I can understand, like, well, you're taking that risk.
Can I correct myself? It does say that, but it does say, preference we give to siblings of admitted students if an opening exists in the grade. If there are more eligible siblings than open slots, a lottery for siblings will be held, so that's the protection, so it's not.
You have a sibling, you know.
Yeah, it's not an, it's not an automatic acceptance, it's got to be an opening. And if there are more eligible siblings than open slots, a lottery could be, so that's, so I'm looking at my notes from principals, and the procedure, notes from principal was, you know, mixed reactions on whether we wanted to continue with that or not. And the other thing about this, and there was question again about equity on this, as we continue with intraschool choice, there is no transportation, parents have to acknowledge that there's no transportation, because we can't be sending buses from Powell to Shafterbury and vice versa, which is logistics of it, and the cost of it would be prohibitive. So it does limit, you know, some people's options for that. That, you know, was a question that was raised on whether that, you know, what's the equity of that? But I don't see what, short of eliminating intraschool choice, I don't see how you, how you can take that away.
Yeah, I mean, there's a school that has the same curriculum within the district, so that they have the option to go to with transportation.
And from your examples, it appears that people are leaving because of the transportation, well, because of a work environment, or because of a daycare after peer situation, and not necessarily because they feel as though one school is superior to another. If I understand your letters.
Back there.
It's kind of fuzzy. If it were, if I understand your letters as you are sharing them with us correctly, that's how my district is too.
And I have one other question, so say a school like, okay, so you have somebody from Monument that has intraschool choice and goes to Shafterbury.
Yep.
And you're saying that, that once they get selected, they have the ability to stay there through sixth grade?
Yep.
What if they choose after fifth grade to go to the middle school? Do they have to stay there until sixth grade, or do they have the option to then go to the middle school for sixth grade?
I would say that, I would say, so a Bennington resident would have the option to go to the middle school at sixth grade, because that's.
That's technically, so they can switch back.
Right, they can stay, and that could apply to anyone, just because you went to Shafterbury at school choice as a first grader or kindergarten student, doesn't mean at third grade you could opt to go back to Powell.
Okay, your residency, you can always go back to your residency.
Yeah.
So what happens to the outlying schools when they get that sixth grade? Because it's a great question, do they have the option of going to the middle school?
Currently, you don't, yeah.
What about your school choice? Like, is that one of the?
Well, this is Union Elementary School District's intraschool choice policy, which has no bearing on MAU. You would have to negotiate some type of inter-agreement with, with MAU, which is possible, and I mean, and then the money transfer is really just who then counts that student in their, in their school count, but that's a whole other.
So if I live in Powell, which I do, and, this is going to work out right?
I think.
Yes, and I have school choice, and I want my child to go to Benell, or one of the Bennington Elementary Schools, and then when it gets, the child gets to fifth grade, there isn't a sixth grade.
Correct.
They have to go then back to Powell?
Then what happens?
Because that's a tricky one.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to put that on my list, though. I don't know if we've gotten there with that yet, yeah. Because then usually then, I get.
Oh, my friend, is that like, to the middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, all the people that.
I think that might be worked, have already worked out, Sandy, but I don't have that answer for you tonight. I think that, yeah, I don't want to answer it in detail on it, so let me.
I have to imagine it's happened over the last three years, and I have to imagine that they were able to go to the middle school.
Yeah, I want to say yes, that's, I know it's happening, but I want to.
Because I think we would have heard already complaints if we, it's sticky, though. It is very sticky, because then you, the argument could be like, why can't a Shafterbury student try to request school choice, go, because technically, because then you're kind of asking, oh, I want school choice of Molly Stark, but there is no sixth grade Molly Stark, so that really pushes me to the middle school.
Or it makes you think as a family member, perhaps.
We may not have had this happen.
Or perhaps I would say, in fifth grade, I will send my child, I will request choice in fifth grade, and then I know, I mean, if that's.
Right, right.
I felt strongly about.
If you're a little bit more subsided or wanting, is that a dodge, an end around?
Yeah, end around it. Yeah, end around it or, and you're just.
Well, this is why, you know, the more people I ask this question to, the more questioning, so that's, that's good. That did not come up to the principals being.
Cause I actually had that whole middle school discussion with somebody not so long ago. They asked me that question and I couldn't answer it. Like if, if somebody had to go back to the, no, not go back to.
I've heard of anybody going back.
No, not go back to middle school, but like if you're.
Transferred to the middle school and they just are ending up in MAU's student count? Or it hasn't happened yet because we haven't had enough years of somebody coming from a a non-Bennington school to Bennington. Any other input you would like to give me on inter-school choice as I redraft this?
I, I find it like the Jim first timeline because it gives families the opportunity to really think about what's, what they might be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I feel like the later we tell them, the harder it is for them to potentially set up an option and say, don't get it.
Right. And especially in transportation, this is like the principal one, some principals suggest that we wait completely to August and see how many seats are there. But to me, it's tough on families, especially with transportation. They have to arrange that transportation.
And on this question, not that you'd even ask this question, transportation though, is there a point where we may ask families to request transportation just in general so that we know how many seats that we're actually using on a bus? And I only ask that because sometimes you see just a few seats taken on a bus because a lot of parents will come
Yeah.
to one or the other. So is there a point where we could just be, you know, say, are you planning on using the bus in the fall?
I don't know if I want to open that door, you know, because I, I, logistically, I don't see how we could ever do it. When I look, you know, where they're where they're crossing from. Sure. Within Bennington, we could probably make it work because there's enough bu- buses crossing streets and routes or, that we could tell a student who say, um wasn't Monument but wants to go to Bennington Elementary School, but they can't get there, the magnitude, probably too close of a scenario. But we could tell them, well, if you walk, if you walk three blocks, you can get on a bus because that bus goes that way.
I was thinking that.
But it wouldn't work for.
I was just thinking just in general, just because I remember a time when Powell had three buses and then went to two because they just didn't need three.
Yeah.
But for a lot of years, they did have the three. So my question is, can we plan that in advance so that whoever's designing the bus routes?
But I think to Jim's point, like with the elementary schools, like the bus routes don't cross each other, like so the bus routes that, that support Molly Stark, they don't cross each other. Like you would never be near a Woodford stop. So like, if you were to do that, you would have these buses travel, traveling all the way far out of their districts to, to, I think that's where the complexity comes from. So like they're, all those kids are kind of in a structure.
And we're not going to, we could never like, like, I quickly look at things like this for from Powell that are going to other districts. We could never afford to run a bus for four students.
Don't, and I don't.
And I don't understand what you're asking.
Um, so a, a lot of times I will look on a bus and I will not see students on it, but we're running it.
Yeah.
And so my question is, is there ever a point when we can just ask families, do you intend on using the bus?
You mean in general, not especially, it's not, nothing at all to do with.
Alright, well, that's where my confusion is because we're in school choice and I thought you were advocating that I run buses for school choice.
No, no, sorry.
I'm sure in Woodford, if there's no elementary, no high school on the top of the mountain, they're not running to the top.
Well, they're not, but um, I'm just thinking of the example of when Powell had run, run, run three buses and then went to two because it just wasn't.
Isn't that looked at each year, like when we're.
Yeah, we, 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 we have software that looks at.
But we don't necessarily ask the families. That's the question. So like right now, there's, there's a bus that I can go on, but my kids don't take it. Cause and especially nowadays, it may be a good idea to Sandy's point. It may be a good idea to, like, cause I think we asked it during COVID, so maybe we.
We did during COVID.
So maybe we do it again each year only because like you have a lot more parents working from home than they did in the past. And so you have a lot more parents driving their kids than they did in the past. So like, I'm one of them. Like I, I work from home now, so there's no reason for my kids to take the bus. So I think that it, to Sandy's point, in general, not talking about inter-school choice, but it, it may be something that we may want to survey uh, to what, right before potentially the bus situation is, is set for each year. And, but the bottom line is, and I think this is what, what you're probably going to come back and say, it's, people probably don't answer these surveys.
Not, not to the return rate that you would think that would, you know, get us to the point that we would eliminate a bus.
But if it depended on whether you're going to have a bus in the fall, you might consider it. And now the bus goes by your house, just using yours as an example, the bus goes by your house, but it may not have to, is my point.
Yes, I, 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 I get your, I get your point.
So I have one more, getting back to school choice, I have one more. I, I don't have clear input from this board, how you feel about the second date, the practice that we've been doing of looking at August and seeing if there's open seats and do we continue to open those? Principals are asking that we don't do that second date.
My personal opinion is if there's seats open.
That was, that was mine.
I agree, because what difference would it make if I moved into the neighborhood the last week of August or if I had to find out in the middle of August? And how you do your lottery if you don't have that second date?
Okay.
Right.
And then what's the point of a waiting list if you don't have the second date?
Right, maybe, well, they would, there would be no waiting list.
Right.
If you didn't get in June, you can fly again next year, but there's no, there is no, no room in the end this year, so.
Sounds harsh.
You know. I think the reason we designed this, right, we, we wanted to give people choice and I I get a little, I get, I don't like to get hung up on deadlines, right? Why would I say no to a seat that's there, that somebody wants, that would make somebody happy or help their, their childcare situation or help their work commute situation? Why would we say no to that, right? Uh, just because of the deadline. We waived the deadlines the past two years because of COVID, you know, because so we've been, but we're going to go back on that. So do I, it, it, it sounds like what I'm hearing from the board, continue with, you know, the late, look at the late deadline.
I mean, it was one of the biggest benefits of, of us consolidating as a district.
Right.
Yeah, good. Well, then I welcome your input and as I continue to, to draft this and I'll bring it back in another, a new application, a new procedure with whatever these changes are and they're going to be minor. One, one of the, one other thing the principals, and this, this is a little tough. They'd ask to add a, a line to the application that warns uh, that if transportation, transportation comes to issue, you may be returned to a resident school. What that means is if, you know, you're responsible for your own transportation. And now your child is not showing up every day. And transportation, so now you're truant a lot because you can't get to school. They're asking, the principals ask that I would consider for that you, you are going to go back to where you can get to school. You can either walk or take a bus.
I think that's reasonable.
I, I, I kind of think it's reasonable too. I, I think we, I think we want to be careful of how we word it, but.
And, and how we interplay it too, that, that doesn't seem, you know, arbitrary or discriminatory that, that we're saying that.
Well, it's there in, maybe in risk of truancy. Maybe you make that, cause that's like a, you know, state thing where police are involved. I mean, like, that's a whole other, you know.
You know, I don't want to get spoken on defining how many absences takes that.
But the policy does, right. So like the truancy policy does. So if there's risk of truancy, then I think that maybe that's how we word it because we wouldn't want a child potentially having that risk.
I will um, consult legal counsel on what the wording should say for adding a line like that to the application that says uh, you, you know, you risk your placement if attendance becomes an issue.
I think Chris might have a thought on this. I could see his brain.
So we need to find a clear way to document the reason for truancy. I mean, if we're relying strictly on, on parental reports, I don't know that that's a, I don't know that we can rely on that as the indicator as to why a child has been truant. So I I, I agree with, I agree with the idea that, you know, if a kid is not showing up to school, maybe we could even say chances are it's because of a lack of transportation, but I don't know that we can I don't know that yet we know a way to definitively say that truancy is based on a lack of transportation. And therefore I would not necessarily want to disrupt a kid's educational placement strictly because of our guess as to why truancy is occurring.
Good point.
Cause I, I agree, Chris, that like, I don't want to move that student. Once they make that decision that they stay there, what, what can we do to help them get to that, get to school on time every day as opposed to um, moving them year or at the end of the year or.
Because I mean, as we see right now, the, the vast majority of our students who are truant are in, are our resident students, right, where transportation is not an issue.
Right.
Have we seen that? Like, is this coming out of a place that, that request for that language? Is this coming out of a place from experience? Or is that just an assumption because of the transportation issue?
In um, just to make sure. Student enrollment numbers, they were in the packet, right?
Yes, yeah. The last two pages I got them here.
I don't have it, it's on my page, but it does show that it's in the catchment.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What is it showing for?
For percentages, nineties, low nineties.
No, but I mean, like, are the principals saying that they're, they're noticing truancy, not truancy, but attendance issues with those particular students that are already, you know what I mean? Like, what's making them come up with that?
I literally said, I, I, I just had in mind that that was a request that they had, but not, I don't know if it's.
I think that.
Be the specific to.
I think it is, it is a reasonable request, but I say we hold off on that kind of wording. My, my opinion would be we hold off on that kind of wording and until maybe we have more time in this and we, maybe we do some data analysis to see if it's actually an issue. You know, like are we seeing transportation issues with these, with, with these kids that are school choice that is causing a reason to have that language? If we're not, then we're making an issue that is, that we're kind of potentially making.
I don't have any, I don't have any data that shows that there are uh, school choice attended children uh, who are truant.
Right. So I would, I would say that it's not an issue at this point, and until it is an issue, then we address it then.
So the other question I have is how many kids or how many families maybe change jobs and then want to change back to the school? Has that happened, like a foot bump?
Lose their job.
Or something else, where they, where they had, where they helped be back in their home school instead of, and, and how do they, how does that process work?
I, I don't have that in front of me, that information. This is anybody who's been school choice and then gone back to their resident school. Uh, I imagine that, I mean, it certainly has happened. We have students that move for other reasons, placement issues, but um, you know, whether it's state placed student or something like that, that may move, but um.
In this situation.
I, it's, it, it wouldn't be a problem. They can go back to their resident school. That's where they go, so.
That's, that was my question. That's just a.
But they, but we also, we would not force them to go back. They can't, they don't have to reapply every year. It stays until they reach the terminal grade for that school, but um, you know, if for whatever reason they want to go back to the, their, their, their home school, then they're entitled to go there. Alright, well, thank you for your input for that as we, and I think the I appreciate the input that the principals gave us on this as we, you know, take a look at this and see how it's going. I was actually surprised by the, by the number of students when I asked for the report of who's, you know, in a non-resident uh, district, so um. Thank you. And that's, that's uh, my report this evening. Returning this over to Chris.
Okay, thank you. And, and thanks Dick for editing while, while I myself was tardy. Uh, so that brings us down to agenda item six, which is our policy section with four to warn. Ten nineteen, which is the nondiscriminatory, nondiscriminatory mascots and school branding. Policy, draft policy fifty-three hundred, which has to do with grievance protocol for five oh four and ADA um, compliance. We have fifty-five ten, which is our equity policy, uh, which is a point of uh, essentially principles and points of practice. And then draft policy fifty-five twenty, uh, which is transgender and gender non-conforming students. Uh, I would just note that the, the first two, ten nineteen and fifty-three hundred, um, you know, those if not entirely, at least include uh, processes for grieving uh, and making complaints, which I think are important for us to review. And then of course, the other two as well. So uh, I would accept a motion to warn all four policies as published, please. Thanks. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on approving, on, on warning the policies as published?
Uh, just one thing, and I, I'm trying to figure out which line it is, but in one part of it, it has that the superintendent will adapt procedures and I don't know if that's in place. I apologize. I only have line twenty-seven, so I'm thumbing through these to see which line twenty-seven says superintendent will adopt policies.
It isn't necessarily been practiced, although the procedures
Right.
are in place.
So are you referring to fifty-five twenty? Uh, it looks like page two.
Thank you for.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, um, so now that we're taking a look at that, could you please just repeat your question, Sandy?
Uh, I'm just wondering if the superintendent started to adopt any procedures.
I just, fifty-five twenty.
Jim, if it maybe you could give a, just an outline about um, how, generally speaking, how does the supervisory union, how do the individual districts make sure that their admin regs match FERPA requirements?
Maybe that's. I think that's a different question because I think it's because I always thought the procedures went beyond and they weren't actually part of the policy. But in this instance, we're asking it to be part of the policy and that's why I asked about it. Typically, the superintendent's procedures or the administrative procedures will come later.
It doesn't say that they can't. It just says that it directs the superintendent to adopt them.
It will adopt.
We'll, we'll draft them. After you draft the policy.
Right. Yeah, because I think, I mean, I think the, the, the creation and adoption of admin regs almost always follows. We, we need to approve a policy before we can start to develop the admin regs, but I think, I think that's been typically been our practice.
And there is a section of, of the the sheet that follows the policy development that lists whether or not uh, procedures have been developed.
Alright, any other questions or discussion about the motion to warn? Alright, so hearing none, all those in favor of warning the four policies as published, please signify by saying aye. Me opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, the motion passes. Okay, so agenda item seven is the chair's report and I will say that there is no chair report this evening. Um, which will then move us into agenda item eight, which is a principal report.
The superintendent apologizes with the holiday yesterday. I did not designate a principal to come to the meeting. That totally slipped my mind. So, you know, I practice of, I mean, one principal will come to you and give a report on their school. I will take the blame for that there isn't a principal tonight because I did not ask any of them.
Okay. Alright.
I'm sure I have one for you for next.
Thank you. So that's agenda item nine then, uh, just the FYI, the information that was posted, it to be posted, which includes the budget status report and student enrollment numbers. Uh, I would say that if anyone is interested in um, serving as a bargaining rep uh, in the two contracts that the superintendent mentioned, uh, when I joined the meeting, you can please let me know that. You can give me a call, send me an email, throw me a text, whichever you'd prefer. Uh, but I'd like to get those identified, those people identified soon rather than later, uh, so that we can have a seat at that table. Um, and with that, uh, I guess I would also just encourage everyone, if you haven't already, to make sure you switch over your email addresses to the SVSU uh, server. You might miss some important information if you don't do that. So with that, I. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on adjourning? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.